All right, good evening everybody, welcome to the May City of Claremont City Council Meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody that's here in person and those joining us on our YouTube video broadcast that I had to coordinate with to start at that corner of the room back there. I know folks are here for some different presentations, hearings, things of that nature. Welcome to stay for the whole meeting. We'd love for everybody to stay for the whole meeting, but understand if you need to leave early, so if anybody leaves early, the meeting will go on after each issue. We just ask that you leave out the back side as quietly as possible because the meeting will go on to the next issues on the agenda. So first up, I would like to recognize Councilmember Les Morrow for our invocation this evening.
Bless, pray. Dear Father, first, let me say thank you on behalf of all who have gathered here tonight. Thank you for your many blessings and prayers. I want to pray for all of our city council members, our city staff, our major department, our emergency personnel, and the citizens of Claremont. Please guide us in making sound decisions for our city as we improve our agenda. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Les. And I'd like to recognize Councilmember Dan Miller for the pledge of allegiance and the flag.
This is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt. All right, council, you have contained in our packet, our email packet that we received late last week, the consent agenda, which contains the meeting minutes from the April 7th council meeting, a few miscellaneous line item transfers, update to the city procurement policy, update to the holiday leave of absence policy, and a resolution opposing some legislative legislation at the state level. If there are no further additions or changes, it would just be motion on second to approve the consent agenda. Second, motion by Les, second by Gary, all in favor? Motion carries. All righty. As far as elected official reports this evening, two quick things from me. I know Heather was not here this evening, but she organized and we got a great retiree breakfast this past Saturday morning at Fire Department. Our former police chief was there, Captain Pruitt, captain Pruitt, and a lot of other fire department members who some are still serving, some are retired, two of which Councilman Gary Segal and Councilman Les Morrow are both former members of the police force, the fire department. Gary's a former fire chief. It was a good event to have this past Saturday. And also, council, everybody has an envelope from St. Mark's Woods from church, which in full disclosure is my church and the church and a few others in the room. We have a, our congregation has an ordination and installation service of the new pastor this coming Saturday, May the 10th at 1:00 p.m. So those are invitations to everyone for his ordination and installation of the new pastor here at St. Mark's, Quentin Francis Surrace is his name. Other than that, that is all that I have from the mayor's report. Councilmembers, anything? Anyone wish to report on anything?
Yeah, I do. We saw myself and Gary Segal just did a little trial of lead and this about being approved this past week and the governor, attorney general, and State officer come in and spoke to us down there. And also on past Mayor Glenn Morrison's resolution will be sent to us here. It is approved and on down there, so it will be sent to us here. And also, the governor did make a statement, Jason, that there is money allotted for counties that we don't want to sit back and wait too long for construction stuff that will bring up, if we can get a block of grants for a lot of them, so we don't waste time on it. It just tells you this amount.
Yeah, Mayor, I also attended the last month in Asheville, two days of meetings today on clean recovery. And one was Samaritan's Purse, I'm the volunteer liaison with Samaritan's Purse, so we have the day before the state to make sure we have all our ducks in the room. And they are in the process of getting together with contractors to build their one hundred tiny homes, we have some local, so that they can get more people at homes when this disaster is kind of relieved, they go on to other areas and houses for other people. Then for the big meeting that was in Asheville, the governor was there and went over, Fienel was there, and several individuals from lots of different agencies. So far, they've removed over six and a half million cubic yards of debris and haven't gotten to the waterways yet. They think there's close to three million cubic yards of debris still in the waterways. And there's still over four hundred and eighty families that have inadequate housing, and they've already housed over four thousand. So a lot of work been done, a lot of work still to do, but this group meets about every four to six months and see where we are and see what needs to happen, but we're awesome. Hard to get information.
I know Samaritan's Purse, you know, they should do great work.
A lot of work, a lot of work, a lot of effort.
Follow them on social media.
Had a lot of weather on them.
Exactly. Anyone else wish to report on anything? Okay. Moving next, public comments. Anyone who wishes to speak on any open topic, any topic that's not already on the agenda that comes up at some point during the future in a few minutes, I always ask that you approach the podium, state your name, and speak on whatever topic you have. And just a reminder, per se, that's comments within the five minutes.
I'm Dolores Fair and I live at 2972 Montclair Drive, the notorious Montclair Drive. I'd like to propose an ordinance, I know it has to go before the planning and zoning, and you guys have to post it and you have to vote on it and everything, and I hope that you will, because Claremont has the social gathering, we have that, but we don't have any bar ordinances per se. I know you want to protect the general welfare of the city by enforcing laws concerning certain things, so I'd like to propose no lounge or nightclub can be located within a 500-foot radius determined by a straight line from the structure and not the street distance of the closest boundary line of any residential district within the city's zoning jurisdiction or any church, school, daycare, public park, or playground within or out of the city's zoning jurisdiction. I think that we need that. I know that a lot of things will be grandfathered in, like our little bar here, Claremont Cafe, and the pool room, that's the church is right across the street. I know that, I know we don't have a lot of these, we have box cars, everything like that would be grandfathered. But I think that we need something like a zoning ordinance, not allowing these bars to be in our back door of any residential church, daycare, school. And you know, we have nothing like that. So I want you to take that under consideration. And I'm going to give some things to Bryce, and I've already talked to him about it, I sent him an email a couple of weeks ago about this, so that's one quickly, I have to say. The other thing that I'd like to say real quick is the Montclair Drive 7-Eleven dilemma that we're still facing. I talked to the, I contacted the CEO of 7-Eleven in Texas, Joe Pinto. He referred me to Janie Apia, which is the program manager under the CEO. She and I have been corresponding. She told me that she had contacted the developer. The developer said that you guys, the city of Claremont, had already given the authorization for them to start building, and she threw out the April 8th. The only thing that I could think of happened within that point in time was the annexation, but that did not, in my opinion, or maybe I'm wrong, give, say yes, you have our permission to start the 7-Eleven. That's a concern of mine.
I don't even apply for a permit.
They've applied for the erosion and procrement that's.
But they haven't really applied for building.
The county.
Yeah, they haven't, right? Yeah, they're excited.
But they've told the CEO of 7-Eleven that you guys have, I mean, this is kind of, and I have emails, that you have already given them the authorization to start, and they have planned on breaking ground in June, and they, the July of 26th is when they're going to be completed.
All I can tell you is they've not been given permission to start construction. They're still under cycle.
That's lovely.
I don't know where they're getting that information and why they're telling their CEO that, but they have not got that.
Okay, well, these are things that are happening, and I mean, I'm not lying, I have the truth. And of course, we were distressed when we heard that, because, you know, we come to everything, we're fighting, still fighting for our little Montclair Drive, seventeen residents, we're still fighting. And I just informed Bryce that we do have in the 2983 house, which is, the diesel's going to be in the backyard right there, we do have a well right back there, very concerned about the well water. Bryce is going to look into that, so.
And just to clarify, I know we've had a chance to review because they're caught over and doing half a 500-foot ordinance, it's not a bad idea, but just so you know, it wouldn't keep 7-Eleven from building that project because there is their margarita bar. So they would be allowed to still build their project because they're not serving anything about it.
No, I'm not saying it would stop them from building, because I talked to the ABC Board, I called Raleigh, I talked to, I've talked to everybody. They said that they cannot even apply for permit until they build, till they complete building.
But I can tell you, the developers told us there is no bar land. That is a rumor and that is a.
I don't trust them as far as I can throw them.
So they will be, even if we at a future date passed an ordinance of saying they can't serve liquor by drink, say, within 500 feet of residential neighborhood, they're not willing to do that, so they can still move with their project.
They can move with their project, I understand that. But once they build, and it's a B3, and they think they can do what they want to because they're on a B3, I don't want them to come back and say, oh, we're going to apply for ABC permit. And then they'll have to, you're in the name, you know, you have to come through the city for, I forget the permit, but they will have to come through Claremont as well as ABC Board.
And just to clarify, that is, there's a difference between liquor by drink and selling a 12-pack of beer, like the current does. They will do that.
Of course.
Right.
You know, that's what.
But there is no 7-Eleven in the United States that has a margarita bar?
7-Eleven is changing their strategies the end of this year. They're going to be getting the new CEO, and they're going in a different direction. So things are happening within 7-Eleven that is scary, very scary.
Based on what we've been told, they would not choose the city of Claremont to pilot their first ever margarita bar in the United States.
I don't believe them as far as I can tell.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you, no.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in public comment? Same rules, you just state your name.
Yes, sir, and I'll be quick, very quickly. My name is Whitaker Grandis. I'm actually a citizen of Fayetteville, Carolina. I am one of the heirs of Ippi and Mabel Smire. We came up here today to talk about something that's been away.
Yeah, but that's on the agenda, it's its own topic. You don't get a chance.
Yes, sir, and I promise I'll be quick. I just want to say I'm actually in the Stormwater Board in Fayetteville, I'm starting one more about city government and how it works, and I'm looking forward to looking with you guys and understanding your process. And then to your Western North Carolina, commenting, I can digress for 30 seconds. I'm a beekeeper, I'm president of the Claremont County Beekeepers Association. Beekeepers across North Carolina right now are raising honeybee colonies in order to repopulate the western North Carolina areas that were hurt by Hurricane Hailene. I don't know that somebody's come here and talked to you yet, but I know there is a topic with County Beekeepers Association, and I've talked with them once at a conference, but I don't know, I believe they're also engaged in that process. Wish them well, and I thank you guys for your time, thank you.
Thank you. I can make a few of them. Okay, anyone else in our public comment section? Okay. We will move on to presentations and proclamations, we have a handful here. First off, I can get my things together here. Okay, you got it, okay. If I could have Assistant Chief Derrin Bub come follow. There you are. Those white shirts under the remote here. For a while now, Assistant Chief Bub has been working on a, and I'm going to do my best to narrate what you've been working on, a fire rescue management, through the University of North Carolina at Charlotte, the Fire and Rescue Management Institute. You worked on a professional certificate in the certificate program that's, you know, obviously there to help you as a professional in the firefighter world and lead people, you know, seeking to increase your management mastery, which I was very impressed by, I liked that, that's the worrying thing out there. Of course, advance in your career and advance your leadership. The certificate program that Assistant Chief Bub went through, you know, obviously gave invaluable skills, insights, and is directly applicable to the fire service. It's not a broad stroke management school or something where you got people from different industries in there, it's here obviously towards fire and rescue management. You've been working on that for the last while, and I know there's a few other points that you've learned within the certificate program. Leadership and team building, obviously management skills and personnel management, strategic planning, which I know is a big thing for a city manager, strategic planning is a big thing that you love to do, and communication skills. So at this time, we'd like to present Assistant Chief Bub with his certificate showing completion of the Fire and Rescue Management Institute School of Professional Studies, and congratulations. And we appreciate it, you and all the city staff that we do, if we do extra training to better ourselves, I do, and I've grown a career, I love that we do it here, I'm a huge promoter of growing ourselves. If we stay in these same four laws and do the same thing every day, we're not going to ever grow and do any difference. We get out of these walls and go do these things. Okay, sir, we appreciate you. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Want to say anything else? All right. Thank you, sorry. I forgot to get. Let's get one more picture here, I forgot to get you happy up here. My failure. Got to get a good self. Get on that. And would you like to say anything? This goes above and beyond the assistance it does. I'm a 2020 graduate of myself, and it really gets in depth, teaches you a lot of things about communication, working with other people, it's really valuable. I do appreciate there and taking over the responsibility. We get a lot of work done with other departments across the United States, mainly North Carolina. You look at the guys, firefighter, up to the county chief, veteran in this class, and there's a lot of knowledge, a lot of experience, so maybe something will. Thank you, thank you. All right, next, we have a proclamation that I will read into the record for National Police Week, which is May 11th through 17th. And the purpose of National Police Week is to recognize and honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers who have been killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding democracy. So reading into the record, whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Claremont Police Department. Whereas, since the first recorded death in 1786, there are currently more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States who have been, who have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers' memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas, 345 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers' memorial this spring. Whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers' memorial fund's 37th candlelight vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2025. And whereas, the candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which will be observed this year, May 11th through 17th. Whereas, May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Claremont will observe May 11th through the 17th, 2025, as National Police Week in Claremont, and publicly salutes the service of the members of the Claremont Police Department and other law enforcement officers in communities across the nation. And so at this time, I officially enter that into the record. With it being that, I do appreciate the work of our police chief Tom and all of your staff, and even sitting up here at the dais, there are three individuals who are sworn law enforcement officers at this time, and our city manager, Jason Brown, Les Morrow, and Gary Segal are still actively sworn law enforcement officers at this time as well. So we appreciate what everybody does, and if you please pass along to our public department our appreciation. And next, we have a proclamation recognizing National Public Services Week. Tom, this is you. National Public Works Week proclamation, and that is officially designated for May 18th through 24th, 2025, with a theme of people, purpose, and presence. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Claremont. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, which we have a lot of around here, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Claremont to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. So now be it resolved that I, Sean, all round, mayor of the city of Claremont, do hereby designate the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week, and join with representatives of the American Public Works Association in recognizing the substantial contributions made by the members of the Claremont Public Services in protecting our health, safety, and advancing the quality of life for all. So that is officially read into the record, and Tom, once again, we appreciate you, your staff, and which, most of which are not here this evening, but please pass along to them our appreciation, and I mean, we always talk about seeing your guys in the middle of winter, water leaks, colds, it's sometimes unpleasant, but we appreciate what is done across the board, even on the good days, just note with family, the sun's out there. Thank you. And our final proclamation that takes place in May each year that we will read into the record, this is a proclamation for recognizing National Professional Municipal Clerks Week. The 56th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week is actually, we're in it now, May 4th through the 10th, 2025. Whereas, the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas, the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas, the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas, professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas, the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on the functions of local government and the community. Whereas, professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now, therefore, I, Sean, all round, mayor of the city of Claremont, do recognize the week of May 4th through 10th, 2025, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Wendy Helms, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. So that is officially into the record, and Wendy, sitting down at the end of the dais here, we appreciate what you do. And some of the words in there talk about continuing training, and reminds me of what we just met with the department, Assistant Chief Bub. We promote all the training for all of our departments to get out of these walls and learn new things, and I know you've done a lot of that, and then all the other staff as well, so thank you. All right, that is all the presentations for this evening. First up, we have a handful of public hearings to go through. First public hearing is in reference to the rezoning of a piece of property, 2718 East US Highway 70. So at this time, I would make a motion, or I'd need a motion to go into the public hearing to discuss this topic, only this topic. The mayor, this is table from last month. Okay, I'm sorry, we need to come, we need to untable, we need a motion to untable it, to bring it out from last month, and a motion to untable this and to put it back actively. A motion to re, untable rezoning of public hearing of RZO, 2025. All right, motion by Dale, second by Les, all in favor? Motion carries, we are in a public hearing now. Councilmember Dane Miller, I understand you need to recuse yourself from this conversation, so we do need a motion and a second to officially recuse Dane from this discussion. discussion.
Motion to recuse, say, Councilman Dane Miller.
Motion by Dale, second by Brittany, all in favor. Motion carries, you are recused. All right, Bryce, take it away.
So, this is a carryover from last year, this is RZO two twenty twenty-four, to rezon twenty-seven eighteen East US Highway Seventy, currently zoned V three, requested zoning is V two, this is a two-point-five-two acre property, so just over, two and a half acres. Just reference, I believe this is Hart Drive down here, so Matlocks is right here, this is directly across from Hart Drive to Matlocks. For reference, we have water on the street there on Seventy, and then there is a sewer line down here further down Hart Drive. So, the current, as shown on the left, is V three, adjacent to M one, V R two, and V two, so the rezoning would be a consistent zoning with the, the adjacent property there to the right. So, here on the left, as I normally do, just ones of uses permitted and uses permitted in both districts. To the left is the uses gained, so these would be permitted, permitted in the proposed district, but not permitted in the, the district that would be leaving, so this is some residential uses. Some things like daycares, institutional uses like cemeteries, churches, clubs, hospitals, some other small commercial uses such as automotive repair, and then stuff like parks, and then essential services, which is just utilities, stations. And then on the right, I've shown what was permitted in V two, but is not, uh, permitted in V three, but not in V two, so these would be uses lost, so colleges, hospitals, vineyards, tattoo studios, hotel motel, mostly going to be retail uses, so those uses that are better served on the highway by motor vehicle drivers. Just highlighting some sections of the future land use plan, this rezoning, this area is designated light industrial, retail, commercial, so it's consistent with goal number one in that the district, both the districts that it was in and the district that it will be in promote mixed, mixed use development, which is consistent with these sections of goal one, and I've highlighted some sections from the actual definitions of those industrial and then retail commercial sections. So, again, this is development within these areas where utilities are available, and this is also still consistent with light industrial area on West Main Street. Any more questions?
I, I mean, I know that technically as a college graduate, it's not, it's in our planning.
Correct, yes, yeah, yeah, the, the postal service doesn't care where our minds are.
Okay, we are in a public hearing, so first, councilmembers, are there any questions or comments about this? All right, and since we are in a public hearing, is there anyone here who wishes to speak, either for or against the rezoning? You don't have to, but you want to take them all up and say, well, either, if you don't mind, yeah, if you mind, yeah. Not the gentleman's fault.
Let me speak a little on spot.
Other users prepared.
Just a name, Eddie Hendershot, China, the, the property in question hopefully be the future home of faith Christian fellowship, is the plan for that property, equivalent two-point-five-two acres, so that's, that's the, that's the plan.
True, and I know right now, we all currently have a much smaller space.
A smaller place on, on the corner here.
On the corner here, and outgrown, which is a good thing. Okay, all right, I appreciate you giving the detail there, and, and once again, we are in public hearing, does anyone else wish to speak on this topic? All right, thank you. All right, hearing done, I need a motion to close the public hearing, go back into regular session.
Hello, Mayor.
All right, motion by Les, second by Brittany, all in favor. Motion carries. Okay, our next public hearing is a annexation request on Kelly Boulevard, so I need a motion and a second to go into this public hearing. Motion by Dane, second by Les, all in favor. Motion carries, we are in this public hearing, and Bryce, take it away.
Yeah, so, last month, city staff went through an inventory, some city-owned properties to see which of those were in and out of the city limits, identified a handful, and just established which of those are valuable to pursue with annexing, and these were identified. So, these are two pieces of property and a right-of-way that is on Kelly Boulevard on the Bethany Church roadside, so that would be Bethany Church Road. The total of it is twenty-one point two four three acres. So, just highlighting the, the properties, there's two properties, the one closer to Bethany Church being twelve-point-eight-two acres, the, on the other side, there's a seven-point-six-two acre, and then, kind of hard to see, but based on the legal description in the deed, there's point eight zero three acres in that, that's South Box for Broadway, it's not, it's incomplete, but it's part of the right-of-way. Just to show a shot, a side-by-side reference, this is where it currently stands, the green, the dark green being city corporate limits, the white green being city ETJ, and this would be the result after proposed.
And Bryce, that land is already owned by the city.
Correct, that is owned by the city of Claremont.
Which one showed, that was, that was owned by, all of them.
Both of it, both of them, so this one and this one, I think this was previously owned, then owned, and then, and there was one that was purchased, and then was opposite, so this one was previously owned, and then this one was purchased, but then I think that within the last year, I think, and this is just a right-of-way that, that since I found the legal description of it, we can include it.
All right, council, any other questions? Once again, we are in a public hearing, so anyone wish to speak about this? All right, thank you, Bryce, stay close. All right, hearing and seeing no further comments on this topic, need a motion and a second to close this public hearing. All right, motion by Gary, second by Dale, all in favor. Motion carries, we're back in regular session now. Have another public hearing, this is in reference to Town and Country Aldo here in Claremont, so I need a motion and a second to go into this public hearing. Motion by Dale, second by Les, all in favor. Motion carries. Understand as well, Mr. Miller, you will need to recuse yourself from this discussion as well, so I need a motion and a second to recuse Councilman Miller from this discussion. Motion by Les, second by Brittany, all in favor. Motion carries. All right, Bryce.
Okay, this is RZO one twenty twenty-five, first rezoning twenty twenty-five, so it's a request to rezon two parcels and on North Oxford and one parcel on West Main Street, so that's two-eight-eight-three North Oxford and thirty-seven-six West Main, so the parcels on North Oxford are zoned V three, and the parcel on West Main Street is zoned R one, the proposed is to V two. So, these are totaling, I believe, just under two acres combined, and says point five-one, point-two-one, point-five-two. Just for reference, this is directly on the corner of Oxford and Main, this would be the, of course, the, the car wash, and then there's a home there, and we're speaking about this property on West Main Street, this being the Town and Country property, and then there's a parcel behind it that they own as well. And then for reference, we have water and sewer on both locations, on both Oxford and Main Street. Current, as shown, V three and R one, V two, so would make that, that whole corner pretty uniform.
So, that home that's on Main Street is being used as an office, in other words, it's an R one now, residential, so.
The thirty-seven-six, yes.
It's an office deal now?
Um, so actually, under the current ordinance, an office would not be permitted in that R one district.
Okay, so, the one we go to.
To V two, to allow the potential for that to be, to be an office like it was, correct. So, this is involving three different districts, and this might get a little bit complicated. So, these are uses that are permitted in V two, but were not permitted in either, well, in one or the other of those districts. So, you are including, again, some residential uses that weren't allowed in that V three district, and then some institutional and a few smaller retail uses. Then there on the left, in purple, is, will be permitted in V two, that was permitted in meter districts, so these are the uses gained, so you have things as duplexes, daycare centers, automotive repair, small scale, which is what the, the Town and Country property is currently used for, offices, which is what the previous property was used for, and you do have some things like network gas stations and temporary sales, and the drive-through uses does exclude restaurants, so allowed drive-through uses, but not drive-through restaurants. And then on the right would be uses lost, so those are uses that were either permitted in that V three or R one, but not in V two. So, you're losing uses, for example, such as adult businesses and gaming operations, and tattoo studios, and single-day car washes, and just, uh, rough, or, or more intense commercial uses. So, the future land use map design makes this area partially as that red retail commercial area, and then partially as low to medium-dense residential, that low to medium-dense residential is just the existing residential property, so technically, this would be inconsistent just in that fact, that you're rezoning a residential property to commercial, that'd be the only, so basically, that's not a binding, that, the future land use map is not binding, but whenever you do adopt changes that are inconsistent, you're encouraged to adopt a change to that, to that land use plan. So, essentially, all you'd be doing is if you adopt, would also adopt a change to, to change that one, that one small residential parcel to that retail commercial, how to be the residential district, going from that yellow to red, the rest of the zone, the rest of the rezoning for just the Town and Country property is consistent. All have any questions on that?
Council, any questions? Once again, we are in a public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this All right, Bryce, thank you. So, hearing done, and just need a motion and a second to take us out from the public Motion by Dale, second by Les, all in favor. Motion carries, we are back in regular session, we have one more public hearing. Next public hearing to open will be petition by adjoining landowners to close a portion of Walter Drive, which runs off of Dogwood, and just need a motion and a second, take us into this public hearing. Motion by Dane, second by Les, all in favor. Motion carries, we are in a public hearing to discuss this, I understand that some of the parties want some extra time to, to go over the issue and see the implications and all that type of thing, so really, at this point, all we're going to do is.
I'm trying to do a second.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn this.
Motion.
Right. We're going to adjourn this public hearing until June council meeting to give more, the party more time to do research, and, and that's requested by some of the parties.
Need a motion.
So, need a motion to adjourn this public hearing to the June council meeting. All right, motion by Les, second by Dane, all in favor. Motion carries, this one is adjourned until the next one. Okay, next section, under new business items. First is proposed ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-five, which is amending the Claremont zoning map in reference to the property of twenty-seven eighteen East US Highway Seventy, which we discussed in a public hearing just a few minutes ago. If there is no further discussion, do we also need Dane to recuse or have a motion for more? Okay, so first, before we move forward, need a motion and a second to recuse Councilman Miller from this vote.
Make a motion to recuse Councilman Miller.
All right, motion by Gary, second by Brittany, all in favor. Okay, motion carries, you are recused. Now, back to the proposed ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-five, do we have a motion as designated with the formal text to approve the rezoning?
I make a motion that, if the text of orders twenty-three dash twenty-five presented the closing facts, rezoning is, which is consistent, and the land use plan, or the rezoning is inconsistent, uh, is consistent with the present, present, uh, of it.
He needs to read points one and two again.
Yeah, point one and two, rezoning, yes.
You got to read.
Over. Rezoning creates a consistent zoning division surrounding properties and the vast residential area, point industrial uses to the west, and the residential uses to the east, rezoning occurs in mixed use and midfield development, I like it, he likes it.
All right, is there a motion on the floor, is there a second? All right, motion by Les, second by Gary, y'all in favor? Ordinance is approved. Next, under new business item, the proposed ordinance fifty dash twenty-five, which is extending the corporate city limits of Claremont, this is the properties noted on Kelly Boulevard that we spoke about earlier. Actually, there's no further discussion on this, do we have a motion to approve the ordinance fifty dash twenty-five? Mr. Mayor. It's simple, okay, I make a motion to approve ordinance fifty dash twenty-five. All right, motion by Dane, second by Brittany, all in favor. Motion carries. All right, next new item under, or new business item, proposed ordinance fifty-one dash twenty-five, which will, um, this is to amend the zoning map in reference to the rezoning of property thirty-seven-six West Main Street. Before we proceed with that, we will also need a motion and a second to recuse Councilman Miller from this vote.
That would move the, uh, Councilman Miller.
All right, motion by Les, second by Gary, to recuse Dane, all in favor. That motion carries, now, back to proposed ordinance fifty-one dash twenty-five, if there's no further discussion, do we have a motion, reading the text as required?
Make a motion to approve ordinance fifty-one twenty-five presented based on the fact that rezoning expressed is inconsistent with the current land use plan, and the request is reasonable and in the public interest of the reasons below. One, rezoning creates consistent zoning with the surrounding properties. Two, rezoning occurs as I call it, the mixed use and infield development, as highlighted in the land use goal one. Three, rezoning promotes the amortization and correction, correction of non-conformant uses, as in highlighted in the land use goal three.
All right, motion on the table.
Second.
Motion by Dale, second by Gary, all in favor. Motion carries. Okay, the next item that was on the agenda was proposed Resolution twenty-eight dash twenty-five, but that will be moved to the June agenda, since that public hearing got adjourned until next month, we're just able to simply move that agenda out, correct? Okay, so Resolution twenty-eight dash twenty-five be moved to the June agenda. Skipping down to proposed ordinance fifty-two dash twenty-five. Skipping down to proposed ordinance fifty-two dash twenty-five. Um, this is an ordinance to amend, our code of ordinance is to allow for sidewalk dining. We've, we've never had the official permission for that here in Claremont. We've had a business on Main Street, uh, in the section where the sidewalk is, is extremely wide, um, to have some tables and chairs, as I understand it, uh, to sit out for dining. Jason, is there anything else to add, not aware of this, or just tables and chairs?
Yeah, thanks, this is modeled on the city increase ordinance. Required ADA, um, separation distances that pretty much will make us truthfully only really payable there on, uh, Main Street in front of Riley's, that big brick street. But as I'm saying, anywhere else, you're gonna have a hard time beating five foot requirements pretty many days.
Right.
So, yes, but this is modeled on the city increase sidewalk dining ordinance.
Okay, and then just to clarify, um, you know, obviously, we won't be able to have tables and chairs out in any of the other sidewalk areas, because they're too narrow. Uh, you know, just that Main Street section, one side of Main Street, all that will qualify for this. Are there any other discussions or questions? If not, entertain a motion to, uh, um, accept approval of proposed ordinance fifty-two dash twenty-five? Alright, motion by Les, second by Brittany, all in favor. Motion carries, we can have some sidewalk dining now. We will notify the business tomorrow of, of this change in weather. And I guess they're gonna proceed pretty quick, I would assume?
I would assume so.
Okay, alright. Okay, next up is proposed ordinance is fifty-three dash twenty-five and fifty-four dash twenty-five. Uh, these are for transferring funds from a fiscal year operating budget to the small cap project fund for a public services truck. Do we give the details of what we're, what truck we're looking at?
This is, uh, truck, this is the city manager, um, like most other, um, capital purchases at this point, all capital purchases are ending up in, you know, this one here, Martin, uh, which is why we set up maybe a small capital project, but they're both borrowed through the general fund. And this one is no different, we've been now notified probably past July first. So these are already budgeted, both in the general fund and the water and sewer fund, to be moved to small project capital funds when the truck actually comes out this year.
Okay, council, any questions? Alright, if hearing done, uh, just have need a motion in a second to approve ordinance is fifty-three dash twenty-five and fifty-four dash twenty-five combined.
Make a motion to approve ordinance fifty-three twenty-five, fifty-four twenty-five as presented.
Second, alright, motion by Gary, second by Dane, all in favor. Motion carries. Alright, our last item of new business, proposed ordinance is fifty-five dash twenty-five and fifty-six dash twenty-five. This will be for applying for funds, um, from surplus capital items to the small cap for a new dump truck for public services. When will that truck be?
So what we're doing is applying the surplus, uh, revenues that we got from, I think it's two months ago that we did the surplusing of things like the truck truck, the larger dump truck, instead of applying those funds back to purchasing a medium dump truck that used one that will be used for the lead issue.
That's in addition to the, the one we got a while back on?
Correct, yes. Um, and so, we'll still end up having the same number of trucks, but this will actually be able to be used for the lead issue. Keep having to move, um, that stuff all the way on the vehicle, plus making an automatic, which is issue. And the whole generation now can't drive the issue, so.
Okay, council, any questions? Alright, so need a motion to approve ordinance is fifty-five dash twenty-five and fifty-six dash twenty-five to move some funds to put towards the person that got the truck used to be on the dump.
Make a motion to approve fifty-five twenty-five and fifty-six twenty-five as presented.
Alright, motion by Brittany, second by Dale, all in favor. That motion carries. Alright, get some new wheels over here for public services. Alright, moving on, uh, with there being no further new business, uh, we'll move on into official reports, our city attorney above.
No report.
Right. A lawyer with no report. Uh, city manager, Jason Reynolds, I think we have your printed report, you wanna have anything?
A couple of things that I would, uh, bring to your attention, I'll start with two and three. We did, were able to look at each seven ten on Blue Moon Storage Tanks, that was a product on the spare at last month's meeting. That particular ordinance does, uh, reference the National Fire Protective, National Fire Protective Agency's, uh, regulations for underground storage tanks. So it does, I mean, above ground storage tanks, so it does not apply. However, there are certain requirements that, uh, the local department of environmental quality has for setbacks from a well, and we have identified one person, as you mentioned, uh, on Montclair Drive, that has a, an active well. Uh, and what we have determined is, is that where the underground tanks are being stored is well outside the NCD and Q requirements for distance on that well. Just wanted to announce the Claremont Fire Department has been officially awarded an ISO rating of three in both municipal rural fire districts. Uh, this is a result of the city council's diligent efforts to increase resources in the fire department and the hard work and dedication of both their full-time and part-time staff. Uh, when I arrived here, we were at a five-nine ISO rating, and five in the city and nine, uh, rural. They increased our ISO rating from ninety-nine to a three-nine, and now hold a positive relationship with the issue after this meeting, um, and we are planning a celebration where we will be buying the lead join in our celebration of what we've been able to accomplish from there out in the world for this year.
That's no small feat, for a department our size. I mean, in reference, the city of Hickory, what's their rating, just to put it in context?
One.
They're a one. And there's many of other departments that are way higher than us throughout the county.
There is, out of fifteen hundred and seventy-four fire departments in the state, three hundred of them are class threes.
We're in the upper.
It's less as you go up.
Exactly, and that's awesome.
So especially since the fact we, uh, over sixty percent of all of our efforts that we have to do are outside of our payment, and one of the fourth account.
Yes, I think our newest numbers are right, as sixty-two is the standard at this point, are, um, are far too important if they attend celebration, they should be.
We're trying to get more ground up in the fact. We need more money to do their job.
Do what, I'm sorry?
We're trying to take care of all these uses.
Exactly, I get it.
Well, we may, we need more money from them to do their job for them.
Uh, because they, you know, the folks that live out in the county, um, are getting the exact same truck, the exact same people that the folks here in the city of Hammond are paying city taxes to get, and they get it for a much, much reduced rate, which is not fair.
Alright, and I was gonna brief the council on the budget, Wendy, can you make that a lot larger? Because it is not opening on my computer for some reason, so I'm gonna have to operate on this. So I had told the council last month that we were just gonna have a budget in brief, uh, at this particular meeting before actual budget meeting in June. As you know, our revenues here in the city tend to come in a little bit late, uh, especially with the business performance, which has gone down as an overall percentage of our budget, uh, but it's still around the forty-seven percent mark of our overall average. We did get a notification that ended by down. We're looking at about a thirty million dollar decrease in business personnel, however, not all of the businesses have reported that yet. So we just hope that we can get that, as, as I've said, it seems like since I was born at this point, uh, we live about business personnel. We don't have the luxury that a lot of other places have, with the majority of the revenues coming from, from residential or from property tax. Uh, in looking at this year's budget, there's a couple of things that, uh, we've been working on, and I just wanted to bring to your attention. The total overall FY twenty-six budget, as it stands right now, is a six point two billion. Now, you may recall that our budget last year was about five point three, so this seems like a large difference. Uh, there's two things really driving that, there's a one-time expenditure from assigned fund balance, four hundred thousand to the rail park to finish out the requirements that we have for Claremont International Rail Park roadway. There's also a very large expenditure for, uh, the fire department parking lot of the amount of thirty-two thousand dollars. Uh, so you take those two away, and we're, we're back down into the normal annual range of assigned fund balance to balance the budget. Uh, there are several things that are, uh, included in this year's budget. Of course, we always do the PJ campus transfer, uh, there is a rail park dimension. The first, um, install, installment towards the fire ladder truck, uh, there's a police vehicle, a public services truck, uh, and another installment towards the public services facility, and again, this is all in the general fund. Some of the other capital that we have, the L and E road sign that, uh, we've talked about here at City Hall, uh, parking lot of the fire department, a saw and sprayer, and another zero-turn mower, and then, of course, the addition of fire tanker truck and grapple truck, uh, debt service. So, uh, while it does look a little bit bigger when you check those initial expenditures out, it's probably about four to five percent increase overall, um, from last year's budget. Uh, you can see the categories, it's basically the, uh, this is the enterprise fund. What we're looking at in the enterprise fund is, uh, some of the same transfers out that we saw last year, uh, public services just twelve thousand, uh, future distribution fifty, AMR meter, and fifteen, collections of twenty, and I know I have another hundred. Uh, we also factor in water tank maintenance of fifty thousand, and then a manual rehab of about sixty-nine thousand. Uh, and then we also have the debt coming along with the drawdown for the sewer capacity to the city of Hickory. Uh, so net retained earnings in this particular budget system are about, uh, where they currently are, at about two hundred fifty-four thousand. I always like to mention, whenever we talk about net retained earnings, um, we, we've been very fortunate here in Claremont. Usually, we don't end up touching, uh, our revenues end up outstripping our expenditures, and, and even though you use it to balance the budget at the beginning of the fiscal year, we don't actually need it at the end of the fiscal year. Now, what, of course, in the last two to three years, we've been, I won't say less conservative, well, we've been less conservative, we're still very conservative, we're revenue protection, but we have clawed back some of that for some of the growth that we've had to have. So, you know, it is gonna come a point where, if we don't continue to build out our industrial capacity, we may have to look at other options. Some of the things that we're looking at in this particular budget, uh, above and beyond capital, just a little bit, there is a five percent quota in this, uh, budget. What we're seeing across Catawba County and the uniform region is anywhere from five to eight percent is what the folks are looking at, so as you can tell, it's not, uh, actually slowed down, uh, all that much. There's also a sixty-two percent increase in fire PRN, that this is a huge driver in this project. And what we're trying to do is get the fire problem that we're supposed to do, which is basically four people per shift, uh, ready to respond. Of course, council invested in full-time position two years ago now. That gave us one full-time person per shift, and we supplement that with three part-time folks. Um, and we slowly but surely built that up, where first it was one and one, and it became one and two, and now we're trying to move to one and three. We have asked the county to, to pay their fair share of that particular, um, expenditure. What Drew and Valerie actually worked into the budget is they're assuming the county gives us fifty percent of what we asked for, which we did last year, um, and that's the budget you're looking at. Obviously, if they give us a hundred percent, it'd be much more fair, um, but that will just balance into our, our benefit this year. The last thing that I will say, and we've talked about this a lot lately, is there is an additional police position that is placed into this budget, uh, that you're looking at. And there's a couple of reasons, um, I've talked with Chief Thomas, and we're all seeing the same issues. I know Gary and Les can talk to other agencies, the sheriff's office, other agencies within, both within and without Catawba County, that, uh, the recruitment, uh, issue has become critical. And there are several factors to that. Number one, we do not have young people willing to law enforcement like we used to. Uh, I remember when I started in BLT, there were thirty-five guys in the class, and we graduated twenty-eight. Uh, the last CBCC class that graduated, I believe graduated with eleven. With eleven, and they were already hired. None of us in my class but three were hired. There's not a way to get these young people to wanna do this. Some of that is, is a societal issue, um, some of it is, you can only demonize a certain group of people for so long before people decide that they're gonna be that young anymore. And then some of it is just, I think, generational, it's a different outlook and a different mindset. Couple of the things that we've really struggled with here in Claremont, uh, that you didn't necessarily have to struggle with before when you had a lot of applicants or a, a large, uh, base. What these young people are looking for when they come out, they're looking obviously for high pay. Everybody's looking for high pay, and everybody's chasing that pay. But something that has really started hitting us hard in the last probably year, year and a half, is the factor of there's nowhere to go as far as career progression for those small agency. But even more than that has been, we still have officers to work on. And in this day and age, these folks are coming out of BLT in the training regimen, where they are taught, you do not go to a call line, period, full stop. And so, we have a lot of people, we've had a lot of applicants even before Chief Thomas got here, who as soon as they figured out that we're gonna work alone, went and worked somewhere else, because they weren't willing to do that. It's hard for me, and, and John and I have talked about it, and Les and I have talked about it. We came up in a time when, there were times that I ran the county half the time by myself, and you just did that. Um, and so it's very easy to, to want to judge that and say, well, you know, we did it, why couldn't you? There have been seven officer involved shootings in Catawba County in the last two and a half years. People didn't shoot cops when I started like they shoot them now. And so, I certainly get that, and, you know, we've, we've kind of racked our, our brains and tried to figure out, how do you solve some of these problems, um, knowing you can't solve alone? We're never gonna be here. I'm not gonna be able to offer you detectives' positions and cannons and helicopters and SWAT teams and all that other stuff. But how do you maybe at least make it a little bit more applicable to a younger generation? So one of the things we've come up with, uh, this is our current structure at the police department. That was the first one. Yeah. This is the current structure of the police department, and what we have is a police chief, a captain, and a sergeant. Then you have two shifts, uh, you have two daytime officers, um, and then you have just, uh, positions for two nighttime officers. Couple of things that we're hoping to fix, uh, with the new structure is number one, having folks have a supervisor on duty twenty-four seven. In this day and age, with the liability that we carry, uh, in law enforcement, it is not a good idea to have these young people out here by themselves, without someone who hopefully knows what they're doing with their, to kind of back them up and give them guidance. Uh, also ensuring that there are two officers on duty, and providing some sort of, um, ability, upward mobility within the department. Granted, you know, I'm never one to say create more ranked positions, uh, just to give mobility, but there comes a point sometimes, especially in a small department, where it makes sense. So what we're actually looking to do with council's approval in June is to switch to this structure. This does two things, uh, number one, uh, it takes that three in a line, anyone who does organizational, operations will tell you, I never want to see three supervisors in a, in a straight line. Basically, that is not enough, um, uh, scope of responsibility. What this does is you have your chief and your captain in a straight line. This creates a second police sergeant. You can make it a touch smaller. Uh, so what you have is a police chief and a police captain, this is your administrative staff. Uh, each day, you would have a police sergeant and a police officer, so you've got two on a shift. When we look at our calls for service, actually, we are the most busy, uh, Monday through Friday, eight to five. So technically, Monday through Friday, eight to five, if everybody is, no one's sick and everybody's at work, you're definitely gonna have four people there. On the weekends, you're gonna have two. And then at night, you're also gonna have to include two police corporals and two, or a police corporal and a police officer on the shift. Obviously, the captain and the chief understand that if we don't have enough coverage, uh, when it comes to, um, part timers, which is another incredibly difficult thing to get in, in these days, that they'll be having to cover some of, of, uh, outages if we have sicknesses and things like that, and they're perfectly willing to do that. Scott and John and I have talked at length about this, and we feel like, you know, it would be very easy, and, and the first thing we looked at was, we need three more officers. But this is, I think, a really good structure to start with. In five, six, eight years, if this, the population of this town has doubled, this In five, six, eight years, if this, the population of this town has doubled, this gives you a skeleton to build on. Um, so you don't have to jump straight to everything that you need, but this at least does answer some of the questions that we have about, I don't wanna work alone. And we've got officers now and applicants who told us, like, I'd love to work here, but I'm not working alone. Um, it's easy to say, you know, the county's there, the highway patrol's there, and truthfully, the county or anybody else, they'll assist you anytime they can. But there is a difference in mindset of, I've got a partner here versus I'm hoping somebody's close. Uh, and in this day and age, we've got a generation that, that is not comfortable with that. And frankly, with what they're facing that I didn't face, I'm not a hundred percent sure that I blame them for not being comfortable with that. So, this budget does, uh, include an extra position, uh, in the police department that allows to accomplish this, this structure, um, after the first review. And, could we go back to the budget in brief? I think that is everything that I have, and I'd, you know, be happy to answer any questions that council has or take any comments or suggestions, the things that you do want to see in the budget or you do not want to see in the budget, kind of based on, on what I presented.
Not budget related, but just two comments. Um, with the, the findings you had on the tank, I'm back from his bears concern. Can we deal with the well and the tank location and all that? Can we maybe call her tomorrow or just?
Cause she's not here to talk, hasn't she?
The, the tank that was permitted by the county is not on her property. She's saying that they have a well on the property, but when I checked with the county, there was no permit, so I, I just gotta verify.
Can you just follow up with, just to follow up to kind of, she's not here to hear the, this conversation, so I just want, just to follow up, um, to verify that. And I know we're coming into, uh, I, I've looked at some of the code enforcement, I appreciate the updates, and I know we're coming into grass moment season and I know that probably the, the complaints of, uh, camp yards and, and land and stuff is gonna go up and, and, um, so it's just, I, I know we're getting ready for that, we probably already have some that you've gotten even after this report is, it generated, so. Uh, just to clarify, our procedure is we notify the owner, and then if it's not abated in, what, two weeks or something like that?
Fifteen days.
Fifteen days?
Yep.
And then we go to?
Notices mailed certified to the owner and then there, if there's a tenant, I send it just standard mail to the tenant.
Okay. Uh, I know that's, we're coming into December, that's gonna be that.
And Bryce is also, you know, he and I have talked about, um, you know, normally we do these, these type of things on one grid, but opposite of the places that we see, we go ahead and hand loads, um, even though it will not necessarily be a complaint room set, uh, and that'll, that'll continue to be a little longer.
And just remind me, the ordinance is, it's, it's one foot high on a developed property.
Eighteen inches. Eight, eighteen inches on, uh, developed, and I think it's a couple feet, it's between one and, I think it's two feet on.
One thing I did wanna mention about the, I apologize. Um, probably the biggest question that you have is what are recommendations on tax warrants? So, um, the republic rate will go up about a five percent, uh, which is the pass rate that we got from contract with republic. And I think that ends up being, and I'm going totally off the top of my head right now. I'm gonna say it's a dollar fifty more on republic. Um, we are going with the eight percent water, eight percent standard recommended by what we got now last year. Uh, and then, of course, no change to the tax rate, uh, that, that whole thing's not even more. Uh, and I think we did the calculation for the average haul, and then touching it by seven dollars.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, thank you, guys. Uh, seeing that we have no closed session business tonight, correct? A lot of you have no closed session. Okay. Alright, with that, we just need a motion to adjourn. Sub move. Second. Alright, motion by Dane, second by Gary, all in favor? Motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you everybody for coming out.